Thank you all for coming to our candidate forum tonight. We thank you folks for taking up your time to come and you all, all of our candidates, every one of them, how about that, came out tonight to participate. I'm Nancy Burge-Ronan, I'm the four-year leader and I'll be your moderator for the event tonight. Our rules are very simple. Each candidate will have two minutes to give an opening statement. Then we'll go into the questions that have been submitted by you. I have a whole tub full up here, so I'm taking, again, we're not gonna probably get to all of them, unless you want to stay, you know, until the freeze, until the freeze is at two, three o'clock in the morning. Yeah, I'll tell y'all, I'll be here. When we get to the questions, the candidates, you will have one minute and thirty seconds to answer. That's a long time. At about, at the halfway, no, thirty-second mark, we're gonna hold up a yellow paddle. You also have countdown going on over here. We're gonna start in district and alphabetical order, and then I'm gonna mix it up so the same folks are not first, last, and in the middle all the time. And we'll do that as many rounds as we can. Again, uh, thank you all, thank you all for writing all of these questions, and so, let's get started with the opening remarks. We'll start here with District One with Mr. Washington.
Good evening to all, and to the ones that can't see.
Sorry, I forgot this. We've got two of these and...
You gotta really kinda eat it to make it work.
Again, good evening to all, and thank you for being here this evening. I guess the first thing I wanna tell you is why do I feel I'm the best candidate for the District One School Board seat? My experience, knowledge, Lincoln Parish, the Lincoln Parish School Board, thirty-eight years, field of education, my ability to collaborate with other board members and community board, and qualifies me for the candidate for the newly-elected school board position, District One, that was recently held by Sister Susan Phillips' wife. May the work I've done speak for me. May the nearly three thousand former students, parents, numerous of teachers, support personnel, and administrators that I have touched while with the Lincoln Parish School Board from nineteen-seventy-nine until my retirement in nineteen, I'm sorry, in two thousand seventeen, speak for me. May the life that I've lived in this community speak for me. No other candidate can top this or come close to top of what I was able to achieve while working with the Lincoln Parish School Board. Every educational component in this system, public, non-public, faith-based, preschool, Boys and Girls Club, when I was employed with Lincoln Parish School Board, felt the effect of my presence because we supported them financially. There was not a entity in Lincoln Parish school system. I'm ready to go day one. I'm ready to go. My training, my first day on the job was in July one nineteen ninety for this position. Thank you.
I'm a parent. Also, my daughter attends Ruston High School. I'm a product of Lincoln Parish. I remember attending Momma Line's Daycare Center, A. Phillips', I. Lewis', Ruston Junior High, Grambling High School, and Grambling State. At Grambling State University, I obtained, um, I obtained my degree in STEM. And so, when I moved to Texas, this community prepared me, and this community prepared me to compete. I was far along than my colleagues in Texas. And so, at the time, I was in the classroom for five years, and my superintendent created a position at a ti, at that time, and moved me from central, from the classroom all the way to central office. And so, I credit that because of my education here in Lincoln Parish. I was a former assistant special education, and I have a proven track record of closing the achievement gaps for all students. Also, I served on two committees this past school year, the Lincoln Parish Diversity Committee, and also, I served on the Ruston High School National Honor Society Committee. And we were able to work on issues that are facing the school system today. The Betsy Board selected me to serve on two committees, and I was able to work with the state superintendent to face the challenges that are here in the State Department. This community reared me, and I want to serve students and give them a chance to compete.
Uh, my name is Paul Dean. I am running for District Three. I have been an educator for twenty-eight years, math, um, math teacher. I've been a principal and assistant principal. I was an educational consultant with Willamette Industries back in the day. And y'all, all of that, the reason that I feel I'm best qualified for this job is because I do not want this job, to be quite honest with you. But I am a little bit concerned about some of the things that are going on in the parish, and I'd love to sit back, and I've talked with some of my colleagues up here. If I do not get the position, it's not gonna hurt my feelings, but I, there are some concerns that I have, and if I don't get the position, then there's some things that I've brought to them that I was very concerned about, that I would like to see them address in the future. All three of my kids graduated from Ruston High School. This is a great parish, but there are some concerns, and I would like to see them rectified. Thank you.
My name is Clark Canterbury. I live in Simsboro with my wife Angela. We've been married eighteen years. We both graduated from Simsboro, have three children attending there now. Richard, my son, is sixteen, he's a junior. Sydney, my daughter, is in the sixth grade, and my youngest son Corbin is in the second grade. Um, we're lifelong, both lifelong residents of Simsboro. I was appointed to this board six months ago, have learned a lot in my six months, learned a lot from my colleagues here on the board, and I would look forward to serving the kids and the teachers of this, of this District Three, not only in Simsboro, because my district, we have a very large district that goes all the way across to Viana, so a lot of the students and teachers go to school in other schools, and I also look forward to serving them.
Good evening. My name is Gloria Miller. I want you to know that I am a woman of faith, that's the first thing I want you to know. I'm just gonna give you a little bow of myself. This is my first time seeking an elected office. I am a retired teacher as of May twenty twenty-two. I have twenty-one years of experience in the Lincoln Parish school system. My first year, I was at Ruston Junior High School. My last eighteen years, I was at Children High School, and my last three years, I spent at Ruston Elementary School. Now, my educational background consists of a BS in Business and Library Education. I have various professional developmental courses from Louisiana Tech, and by the way, my BS came from Grambling State University. And I have certification in Counseling in grades K through twelve. I've been married to Jeffrey Miller Senior for over forty years. We have, uh, three children that all grew up in Lincoln Parish and graduated from Ruston High School. They are proud products of the Lincoln Parish school system. My oldest is Jeffrey Miller Junior, who works with the Boys and Girls Club. My middle child is Jessica Miller, she's a teacher at Hillcrest Elementary. And my baby boy, Justin Miller, he's a teacher slash coed at Boja High School. Uh, we have two grand boys, Brendan and Aaron. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jenny Shadowen Canterbury. Um, I'm married to Brian Canterbury from Simsboro, who happens to be related to Clark, um, so there's no coincidence there. Um, I have, I went to school in, um, Lincoln Parish from the beginning. I, in fact, I, me and Mr. Washington were talking about my sixth-grade years, sixth-grade year under him, um, and he looks exactly the same, by the way. Um, I, I went to Ruston High, Ruston Junior High, I. Lewis', Hillcrest, uh, graduated from Louisiana Tech and Ruston High with honors. I got a Bachelor of Arts in Psychology, um, which has actually come in handy. I'm a licensed Realtor for Lincoln Parish, so I do a lot of showing in the community area. I decided to run because as I'm going through things with my daughter in the, the system, um, there were just some things that, uh, I thought that would be great to have a little more parental involvement. Um, I wanted to get back to what I felt like was, um, the real reason for the school board and the representatives, um, which is being a voice for their constituents. And, um, I had talked to some people, and, you know, we kinda felt like that there was a need, so, um, that's why I decided to run, and, uh, that's, that's my line.
All right, forgive me, I don't, I have a stand-up desk in my office, I'm gonna do a little cheers, uh, and maybe the old ball coach, Jimmy. I'm Hunter Smith, uh, born and raised here in Ruston, uh, graduated at Ruston High School nineteen ninety-nine, graduated Louisiana Tech in Education, uh, was a football coach at Ruston High School from nineteen ninety-nine to oh-five. Uh, probably the most thing that I'm proud of is my wife and kids. Becky and I have been married, uh, going on nineteen years, eighteen-plus years, I have three boys. Lander is a freshman at Ruston High School, George is an eighth grader at, I mean, seventh grader at Ruston Junior High School, Jack is a sixth grader at I. Lewis'. Four or five years ago, I had a conversation with one of my mentors here in town, Trot Hunt, uh, he was the current school board member at that time from District Seven. I told him that I was interested in the position, and he told me, he said, Hunter, if you're really interested in it, let's talk about it, and when I stepped down, I think you'd be a great fit for it. I ran out of post four years ago, uh, I've learned a tremendous amount from my colleagues on the board, uh, from the administrators in our schools, the teachers, parents, all the stakeholders in this community. There's three things that I think are critical about being a school board member that I want you guys to remember tonight. The first one is, is that I think that school board members need to be aligned with their community's values and their expectations, and to understand the role that a school board member plays in that community. Number two, Lincoln Parish schools are essentially a hundred million dollar per year business. As such, school board members should have an understanding of business strategy, decision, and long-term planning. Number three, school board members need to be actively engaged in our schools and our communities in a consistent manner and for the right reasons. I wanna thank the Ruston Daily Leader, I wanna say congrats to everybody sitting at this table. Being a leader is not something that comes easy, it takes courage to stand up and do something for your community, so I would commend everyone at this table. Thank the leader, thank the community for coming out. A lot of times, people don't wanna get involved, so for you guys to be here tonight, that says a lot about you.
I had to strip all of the seasoning out of mine, so I got the brush. Oatmeal, a fixture of the Lincoln Parish School Board, and a proven wise choice for reelection. I'm seeking reelection to continue using my twenty-five years of experience on the board, eleven of those as board president. I seek reelection not as a politician, I'm not political at all, not self-seeking, not self-fulfilling, but I want to use my experience because I'm prepared, I'm committed, and I'm a willing servant, and I have had much, much practice. I do humbly, but assertively, and with utmost integrity, wish to continue using my experience to make a difference here in Lincoln Parish. I'm seriously concerned about the dignity, the welfare, the well-being of our children, that's all children, to the extent that I have devoted fifty-six years to practicing, helping children, not just with their academic growth, but more importantly, with their total growth, that they can have a quality life. I am driven by an unshakable belief and a conviction that every child is valuable, every child needs and deserves an education, every child can be successful. My experiences have notarized and sealed this, oops, this conviction, uh, and this belief. Uh, I wanna get Lincoln Parish to the very top. We, when I got on the board, we were way down the, the, the ranking in Louisiana. Now, we are number five. Please allow me to continue that by using my hands-on experience, applying the acquired knowledge and wisdom and understanding to the consecutive changes in education and hot votes.
I am Juan Hooper. I am a lifelong resident of Lincoln Parish District Ten. I attended the schools of Lincoln Parish Elementary Schools, a graduate of Ruston High School, and a graduate of Louisiana Tech University. Lincoln Parish schools have afforded me a very, very good education. I'm very proud to have attended the schools of Lincoln Parish. I am a fourth-generation educator, and the legacy of education is ingrained. I bring to the table thirty-two years of educational experience in early childhood education. That is the foundation, that's where it all begins. I pledge to support all students regardless of socioeconomic status, ethnicity, or disability in their quest to receive the best education possible that will lead to a productive life as a citizen. Therefore, I am motivated to continue to move forward the progressive mission of the Lincoln Parish school system to provide a quality education for a quality life. I am adoptable, I am attentive, and I'm well able to help push Lincoln Parish school system to number one.
My name is Debbie Abram, and I'm not a politician, but I am a retired school teacher who is very passionate about children, their safety, and their quality of education. After graduating from Tech with bachelor's and master's degrees in elementary education, I began my third-sixth year teaching career, for the majority of those years being a fifth-grade teacher at Lindu. While at Lindu, I was honored to be Teacher of the Year. I became a certified Lincoln Parish School System mentor for new educators and served on the superintendent's advisory committee. I was also a lead remediation summer school teacher and an after-school lead tutor. At retirement, I wanted to still be involved in education. School board elections were being held that year, twelve years ago, and I was fortunate to be elected to serve District Twelve. It has been a privilege to be a part of the Lincoln Parish School Board. We work well together and have a deep respect for each other. We are so grateful to have a well-qualified central office staff to work with in making the right decisions for the children in our parish. I hope to continue to serve on the school board representing District Twelve for the next four years, and to help maintain the Lincoln Parish school system's high-ranking status in Louisiana. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Doug Perry, running for District Twelve. Uh, I retired from teaching at the end of last school year, after thirty-six years as a high school agri-science teacher and as a faith advisor. I started my career at Jackson High School in East Valenciana Parish before coming back to Lincoln Parish, where I was taught for twenty-two and a half years at Simsboro High before transferring to Children, where I taught my last twelve years. During my career, I was very active in my professional organization, the Louisiana Agri-science Teachers Association, where I served on statewide committees and boards. Locally, I've served on the superintendent's advisory council, crisis management teams, as well as serving as a new teacher mentor. I'm running for school board because I felt the need to stay involved in education and to serve my community. I have one daughter that's a product of Lincoln Parish schools. I feel she received a great education, kindergarten through twelve, and I wanna do what I can to help ensure that others have the same or better opportunity. My interests include school safety, spending tax dollars wisely, and supporting students and teachers. I've noticed that people often have a difficult time advocating for themselves, and I would like to serve as a voice and a set of ears for the people in District Twelve. I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Okay, excuse me, thank you candidates, and let me remind you, you have to, or please to pass the mics back and forth as we begin. All right, first question, and none of these are easy, guys.
Real clear. Are we all answering the same question?
Yes, at this point, yes. Yeah, these are all for everybody, and like I said, none of them are easy. These guys did a great job of thinking of the topics that they wanted y'all to discuss. All right, and Mr. Canterbury, you are first, so, District Three. Here's the question, folks. How would you propose to assist teachers who must pay out-of-pocket for school supplies for their low-income students?
Well, um, let's see, they didn't get some good questions. Teachers paying out-of-pocket for supplies. Um, I guess, I'm not exactly sure how to answer that. I would assume there would be some type of fundraising done through the schools. I know in our local church, we do fundraisers for the children at Simsboro School to raise money and to go get school supplies for all of them. We get the supply list, we pick up a bunch, and do that church-wide for the school. Uh, as far as funding for the teachers to do it, um, I'm assuming there might be some type of fundraiser's done through the school, or if they could approach maybe the school board and find out a way that we could work together and figure that out.
All right, same question, Ms. Miller.
Well, in order to aid teachers in paying supplies, I mean, paying for supplies out of their pockets, I think we could, and our communities have been really good in donations, so we could go to various, uh, communities and ask for donations. We could also, of course, ask the, our school board to make some adjustment for our teachers when they would not have to pay out of their pockets. Those were the only two things that I could think of, community, go to the school board to see what, how they could assist them better.
And Mr. Bean.
We have stipends that we give teachers. I work at a downtown community charter school, and, um, you know, working in various parishes through the years, uh, there were times when, uh, the parish would provide stipends for the teachers to buy their school supplies, you could use that, of course, what they're saying is from the community. Um, I mean, you have funds available to you, one of my questions would be, um, what is our grant writing in the parish like? Who does that? What kind of grant writing do we do? Because you could use grants for those types of things.
Miss Canterbury, move to District Seven.
Um, my initial thoughts on that are, I remember buying many school supplies for my one daughter, um, that, you know, it was thirty number-two pencils and, and such that she would not have used all herself. Um, I think that instead of, you know, some doing more and some not doing as much, if, and, and this may not even be allowed, but, you know, if we could have some kind of school fee, um, that everyone kinda is required to put into if possible, and then maybe, um, have it more evenly distributed that way, I, I know that that's probably a, a long shot to be able to, you know, instead of purchasing maybe a pot that we can help, but, um, you know, I know the teachers have said a long time that, you know, a lot of times their, their check is a lot less because they do that and they, they give from, because they don't have to. But I would love to see more of a community effort if possible, and even with the schools, to be able to, um, do a bigger, let's help each other kind of thing, and be able to distribute more evenly that way, but, um, I don't have all the answers, uh, but that's, that's my initial thoughts.
Stand up again, sorry, guys. Um, when my wife was a teacher at Cypress Springs, when we first got married, I saw the same challenges that she had, and, uh, I saw her reach into her own pocket, into our savings accounts, and help those children. Like Jenny said, um, I think, I think there's multiple ways that we can do this, but I think one way that I would say initially is, um, those who much is given, much is expected. I think there are those of us in this community that can step up and can do more, um, whether or not that's through an adopt-a-school program, whether or not that's a local fraternity doing backpack drives that I've seen, or it's, uh, you know, local church, like Clark says, there's multiple ways to do this. The flip side of that is too, is that I would challenge our parents of these children, that hey, you, you gotta come meet us somewhere in this deal. It's not always on the school, it's not always on the teacher. As stakeholders in this community, whether or not you're a parent, a teacher, or a administrator, or a central office, we're all in this together, okay? And it's not the responsibility all the time of the school. I would encourage the parents of these children who are struggling to get their stuff, that they need to step up, okay? And so, it's a multitude of things, but I would lean on those two. Those of us that much is given to, much is expected, and we should do more. Those of us that aren't doing enough, should do more.
Pass the countdown this way, Mr., go to District One, Mr. Washington. I'm gonna mix this up.
Well, we think, uh, usually, the month of August, the beginning of school, every other weekend or every other day, this organization, that organization are having back-to-school drives, internities, social organizations, churches are giving supplies away for students to go back to school. So, when I think of a student in a school not having supplies, there are provisions at that school. If that child is a homeless child, then they go to see Todd Law. Todd Law has provision in the law that they provide everything that that child will need. So, there's no excuse for a child not having a supply if they would let their teacher, principal know, then they can make contact with agencies in, within the Lincoln Parish School Board that can provide supplies. Uh, so I, I, I'm just not really seeing why we would want not have a supply. And as Mr. Hunter says also, then the parent has to understand too that they have a responsibility. But ba, mainly, if they like uniform, if they like, uh, pencils, et cetera, then see your teacher, principal, Todd Law, they'll take care of it.
Ms. Williams.
So, I worked in a similar situation in one of my former districts, and we encountered the same situation, and so, the administrators, um, at the time I was in central office, we met with, um, the school principals, and we created what was called bundles. And so, you had like a stack of notebooks, pencils, pens, crayons, and all those different, um, items that especially that would last the student for the first semester. And so, we were able to get the supplies at a very, um, reasonable price. And so we were able to get the supplies at a very, um, reasonable price. Um, but also, one of the things that we looked at too was, and we did it from case-to-case basis, if there were parents that could not afford, um, to purchase those bundles, then we had different sponsors. But, um, that system worked, um, because, um, it started off from August all the way to December, and then we also started the process again in January. So our teachers were not in a situation where they had to come out of pocket to purchase supplies for students.
Moving now to, um, District Twelve, who's next?
Yes, uh, parents do have to pay a supply fee every year. And yes, it's, it's a lot. And yes, there are a lot of parents who cannot afford to do this. I know that, uh, teachers have gone and to different organizations and clubs and asked for donations, and always, always these people donate. And, um, fundraisers too. I know a lot of teachers that, uh, do this in their class and would volunteer, for parents and parents volunteering to do this.
I feel like all the great answers have been taken. I think probably one of the most important things that could be done would be to strengthen the adopt-to-school partnerships that are already in place and look for new partnerships that can help provide supplies, especially to students that can't afford their own.
And we go now to District Ten, Ms. Smith.
Okay, uh.
Uh, I was very fortunate in my career as an educator to work at schools that were, um, that were Title I schools. And each of my schools received the largest amount of funds, and I did not experience not having things to work with. Uh, presidents was giving to students who were really, really in need. There were organizations that adopted the school, uh, brought the things that were needed for children. And we do have lots of partnerships that are out there. We have people that are seeking partnerships to help schools to have all of the supplies that they need to work with. And I would be one to look for organizations that would love to donate so that would take care of the problem.
Okay, most of the things already have been said, but one of the things that I have really bought down through the years is a way that teachers would not have to come out of their pockets for supplies, materials, because teachers are not paid that well that they can go into their pockets at all. But funds are now available in our schools and are distributed to each school for materials and for supplies. I know it's not enough, but we are increasing that. We've already mentioned several about the, uh, business partners. We now have over eighty-plus business partners, and they are contributing not only their time, but they are contributing materials also. And there are many, uh, back-to-school bashes that are taking place now. And I want to thank all of those who are doing this. I have attended several, um, oops.
You've got thirty seconds, Mr. Trump.
Okay, then, all right. And, um, fundraisers, back-to-school bashes, and, um, those people who are giving out supplies. We thank you so much.
Okay, we have several questions, uh, candidates, about attracting and retaining quality teachers. So here is your, here's your next question. How might the school board address the issue of attracting and retaining teachers? And what, what role do you play in that? We'll start this time with District Twelve. Mr. Perry, you get to go first.
Hello, thank you for the question. I had a conversation recently with a tech professor, and he was talking about the numbers when they would meet on campus and the, the low numbers of students that were in education. So I, I think it's not a surprise that statewide, nationwide, there is going to be a severe teacher shortage in the near future. Um, I think in order to attract and, uh, retain teachers, we need to be looking very closely at what neighboring districts are doing. Is our pay competitive? Are our benefits competitive? Um, and also the culture of the school system, does it make people want to, to hang around? Um, I think a, a strong mentoring program with seasoned teachers, working closely with new teachers for the first few years, um, as well as supervisors, working with people closely for the first few years, would help retain people once, once we have attracted them.
And Ms. Abrams.
We have a program, I think, uh, that is happening right now in our system where new teachers that come in, uh, have a, an opportunity to participate in different types of, um, um, I'm trying to think of the word. Different types of incentive plans. Uh, and we use the funds from ESAR, which is a, uh, emergency fund, to fund these incentives for these teachers. And they choose to do that. And most of them plan on doing that when they enter into the education system. I do agree with the mentor system because we do need a lot of teachers to stay and we need the, the experienced teachers to, to teach them how to, um, work in their system. Thank you.
We'll move next to District Ten. Mr. Andrews, you're up first, in District Ten.
Okay, in terms of helping to recruit some of the teachers, I attend job fairs. I look at the number of, of personnel that's available, and there, there's not many, but I can try to encourage them to come and join the Lincoln Parish system. I support all of the recommendations by our administration to increase teachers' pay, and we are moving up in teachers' pay in Lincoln Parish now. And I think that would help to retain, um, teachers.
As far as attracting, uh, teachers and then retaining them, I also believe that there has to be, uh, a great incentive. And I also believe that a person has to have a passion for education. And once the person has the passion for education, that you will be able to retain them. Uh, the climate has to be conducive for them to stay. And also, we do have to look at what our neighboring parishes are paying. Uh, salary does have a lot, uh, to do with it in order to keep qualified teachers. Mentorship is very important. So all of those things, uh, would be things that we would need to look at.
Okay, we'll move now to District Three. Back on this, I think I'm building somewhere. Somebody went past the, thank you. To Ms. Miller first.
Challenges, challenges from hiring, uh, in attracting and retaining quality teachers are not only locally in Lincoln Parish, it's worldwide. First of all, you need to keep that in mind. Uh, I, I also feel that this is, um, to be something that the board, uh, should continue to discuss and get ideas from our principals and our administrative staff, personnel director, director. We should come to some common ground in closing this gap and correcting this issue.
Mr. Bean.
Um, I'm gonna be honest, this is the main reason I'm here. And this is the reason that I've talked to a couple of my compatriots up here. Um, I am really afraid that one of the, the biggest obstacles that we're gonna have in this parish is the fact that this parish does not fall under the Office of State Group benefits. If you have somebody who's been in the education, they cannot come to this parish if it's, if they're further into their career because they will lose the benefits from the state. And you also have people who can't leave this parish and go to other, uh, districts because they'll lose their benefits. Folks, this is a problem. This is the biggest problem that we have in this parish. I don't know why we changed. I, I don't know when that happened. I don't know why they decided to do that, but it was a horrible idea. Um, uh, pay, of course, i- is, is big, but you have, we have three major universities in our backyard. Keeping, uh, bringing teachers in and keeping them here should not be an issue. Um, I'm telling you right now, if nothing else is said tonight, whoever gets these spots, we need to work on that above everything else in this parish.
Uh, in my months of being on the board here, I have noticed we have increased, uh, we've given some benefits to teachers with an extra paycheck and some incentive for them to stay. Uh, one thing as far as attracting teachers, I just think, uh, the area is a great area to live, for one. I think Lincoln Parish is a great place to raise a family, uh, to come to work, to, uh, to be able to do the things you can do here in Lincoln Parish. So that is an attraction, I think, compared to other areas in the state. But, uh, I think when it basically comes down to pay, uh, you know, teachers are looking to get paid, and a lot of that has to do with, uh, whether they want to stay or not.
So I have several approaches, um, to that ans- I mean, to that question. Um, one, I'm looking at, uh, just thinking about, um, just based on the experience, experiences, allowing teachers to transfer internally. Um, sometimes there are, um, personality conflicts, maybe with the administrator and the teacher. But starting that process at the beginning, early around January or December, and allowing internal transfers. And I've seen where that system works. Also, um, just creating a very competitive package for, um, the teachers, um, the new teachers, and also, um, continuing on just making sure that the salaries are very competitive. And I would be one that will always support raises, um, for teachers, um, and just the overall benefit. Um, I researched an article from the Louisiana State Superintendent, and he mentioned that fifty percent of teachers leave the profession after, um, five years and only sixty percent after a decade. So we are facing some challenges here in Louisiana. Um, what I see is, if teachers are overworked and underpaid. And so we have to create a very supportive environment for all teachers.
Thank you. I'm gonna begin with the latter part of the question. What role may the board play as a school board? Hire and fire teachers? As a school board, no role at all. That's a personnel matter. School board members do not hire and fire teachers. That's the superintendent goes down to the person, so let's get that up where I'm wrong. But as an individual, uh, just non-school board member, when you're not in, in session there, I would be an ambassador for this system. You got to go out and say the right things about Lincoln Parish school system. That you want people to come to be a part of them. The other thing you need to know that Lincoln Parish School Board does not pay teachers to show up to work. Lincoln Parish pays teachers to comp their salary to work. Not like some of our neighboring parishes. We're gonna pay you to show up, and then they're gonna pay you to work. Lincoln Parish does not do that. It's a luxury to work into this school system. Competitive, if we go to the, to the Mississippi line, east. West, to the Texas line. Lincoln Parish can compete with any of those parishes salary-wise. The other thing we have to share with individuals, in addition to salary, you better look at those health benefits. Because if you're not paying out of your, Lincoln Parish got the best health benefit probably there is. Being an ambassador for this system gonna help attract people. Always saying the positive thing so that they can want to be a part of the system.
Seven, Mr. Smith.
Obviously, there's a huge shortage of teachers and coaches all across this country. There's no question about that. People are not lining up at Louisiana Tech, they're not lining up at Graham, and they're not lining up at ULM. And, and I can understand that. I, I graduated from Louisiana Tech in education and went straight into the private sector. Um, but what I will tell you is, is I think one of the most important things that we can do as a board, or as a school system, not as a board, as a school system is continue to improve our strategic partnerships with Louisiana Tech and Graham State University. It's simple, okay? We've got to get into those programs with those student teachers, or residents as we call them now, and make an impact on them early and talk them through why they need to stay in Lincoln Parish, what the quality of life is here. Look at the package that you're gonna get compared to the cost of living here. Sure, you could go to Longview, Texas and make more money. Or you could go to Midland, Texas and make more money. But the cost of living is gonna cancel all that out. I think we can do a good job of continuing those strategic partnerships. Um, I tell you one thing that I'm adamant about in this community is I think that we don't have enough African-American men teachers in this, in this school district. And I think that there's a way that we can get some of our paraprofessionals that have been in our system for a long time that would be great educators for us and find a way to help them get certified and become highly qualified teachers.
Okay, um, you know, from any job standpoint, why does someone want that job? Uh, pay is a important factor. Um, health benefits, as we've talked about, uh, vacation time, um, all of those things that makes it so attractive to work for the state, um, is generally, you know, and even the pay, they'll sacrifice some of that for some benefits. But I think all of those things are very important. Uh, I'm with Mr. Bean on the health insurance. Um, I think that also we need to give them, um, and this is from people, friends of mine that are teachers. Uh, they talk about the communication that even from the top to the, to them, uh, there seems to be some issues there. And I think anything we can do to make it easier for our teachers, especially through these very difficult times and with COVID, uh, you know, if they need more supplies or, um, you know, a new copy or, or whatever it is, we need to do that for them to make their job, you know, more, more able to be done without difficulties. Um, I think that, you know, also in our school systems, good leadership is very important. I think you can have some of the best teachers in the world that care about the children, and, you know, if they're not being supported or guided, then that's also a problem. So those are some of the things that I would look at.
All right, moving from teachers to curriculum. Here's the next question, uh, candidates. Who should have the authority to set curriculum and determine resources used in those curriculums? Who should have the authority to set curriculum and determine the resources used? We'll start this round with District One, Mr. Washington.
Who should set the curriculum? Again, Again, the school board hires the superintendent as this instructional reader for the district. It's the superintendent's responsibility to improve instruction in the school district. The school, the superintendent then hires his chief academic officer. The chief academic officer, along with the superintendent and other members of his cabinet, puts the curriculum together. They put the curriculum together. They bring in key, other key components, as instructional courses, and it goes down to the school level. So it begins with the superintendent and it flows down. I have in my hand now a copy of Lincoln Parish Strategic Plan for, for the next five or six years, and it gives you, it's just like a playbook, step by step by step, what it will be in 2026. But it starts with the superintendent, and it works its way down through the instructional component of the school system. And it flows all the way down, ultimately, the recipients are the children to improve instruction at that school.
And also, from District One, Ms. Cantor.
Okay, so, one of the roles for the school board member, and I'm getting this information from the Louisiana School Board Association, is the quality education experiences. And so, as a school board member, and when you're representing a particular district, it is your responsibility to make sure that you advocate and you support the students that are in the district. And so, as a school board member, one of the, and just based on the experience, the different areas as far as whether we talk about the curriculum department, whether we talk about the special education department, or just related to academics, should be transparent with the school board to ensure that, just laying out the plans, and just making sure that on a monthly basis, they are checking in and making sure that we know the progress as far as where the students are, how we are actually closing those achievement gaps. So it is the, as far as the responsibility, based on the superintendent, but however, there needs to be accountability that's put in place from the school board members.
All right, and we'll move now to District Three, and Ms. Bean.
So, wow. I have been a math teacher for 28 years, and I guess this is gonna be arrogant, but it is what it is, man. The, the person who best knows what to do in my mathematics classroom is me. I'm the expert. That's one of the reasons that we don't keep teachers anymore than what we do. That's the reason why teachers are getting out so quickly, is the disrespect that is given to teachers. Like, I've been trained, I have been educated to be an expert in my field, and so you take somebody that's not, and I've seen it, y'all, I've seen it. I've been trained to go into a classroom, I'm, I'm an administrator, I've been trained to go into a classroom and observe teachers. I had been in that, those, those trainings where I watched a mathematics person give a fantastic lesson, and they asked the other 40 people that was with me, what would you score them? And I saw these people who had no idea what the mathematics were, tell, oh, there are one, fours is the best, one is, you're terrible. There are one, there are two, and they got to me, and I'm like, here's the problem, you people don't know what you're talking about. So, in my estimation, if you hire somebody to do a job, my dad was a Vietnam vet who barely got out of high school. If I hire a man to do a job, I'm gonna trust him to do the job. And if he can't do the job, I'm gonna fire him, and I'm gonna give somebody else that job. The teacher should be the expert.
Well, I'm not gonna speak out of turn as far as who sets the curriculum, and I, I did not come up in education, in the, in the field of education, so I'm not gonna speak on something I really don't know. I do agree with some of Mr. Bean's comments, because I do have many, many friends and family members that are teachers, and one of their biggest complaints to me is always that how much pressure is put on them to reach a certain score or something by somebody coming in their classroom and, and maybe not really knowing how they're teaching, and that they're not teaching the way they want them to teach. As far as setting the curriculum and who should and shouldn't, I'm not gonna speak on that.
All right, Ms. Miller.
I agree with my point, of course. Oh, part of it, I do agree with you. I was just sitting here thinking that I really would like to see a great collaboration between the superintendent and other educators, administration, to come up with this curriculum and the resources that needed to, especially here in Lincoln Parish. It's gotta be a lot of collaboration. We gotta talk about this thing, though, till we can work.
And we'll move now to District Seven, Ms. Cantor.
I'm, I'm kinda like Clark on this one. I am not someone who has been a part of the chain of command on this one, and where it's supposed to be, or start, or who the experts are. My understanding is the superintendent dictates what curriculum and such, and I assume that the teaching coordinators from each school, you know, know their schools well, and they know what their teachers are saying and, and such, and what I would hope would be that those teaching coordinators have a lot of input on, you know, what's going on in the parish and for the schools, and I know that the superintendent would take those things into consideration and, you know, be able to have a more educated view, and to be able to know what would work best for us. But that's, that's in my mind what would happen, is you've got a representative from the teachers who would work closely with the person who decides curriculum and adheres to the, the requirements and the laws.
Thank you for that question. Me personally, I'm a smaller government guy. I think that the feds and the state have too much say-so in what we do in our hometown. We always get comments from the feds or the state, and they're telling us, hey, this is what you need to do, because we're smarter than them. Well, I don't think they know the intricacies of this, this, this community that we live in. We're not an inner-city school in New Orleans, we're not a school in Shreveport, we're Ruston, and Lincoln Parish, and Chujer, and Simmsboro, and Duba, and we stand alone, and we, and we have stood alone for a long time because of the way that we do things. The curriculum comes down from the Department of Education. It's not created by our chief academic officer and our superintendent. They tell us how we're gonna teach things. However, I don't agree with that. I think that our teachers should be able to have the flexibility to be creative, I think they should have the flexibility to use things that works for certain children in their classes, because no child is the same, right? I've got three boys, and when I tell you they couldn't be any different, they could not be any different. And so I think that too much government is probably the problem here. They think they're smarter than the people that are actually boots on the ground, in the classroom with these kids. That's who I go back to. I go back to the teachers that have sacrificed a lot to be in there with my kids, and your kids, or your grandkids, and I would lean on them for their creativity and their ability, and tell big government that they can, no. Thank you. Thank you for going down the road.
We'll move now to District Ten, Mr. Andrews.
This is a subject that many people do not understand, what has happened with boards. We had, some years ago, a move to strip local authority from schools. In July 2012, there was an act passed called Act One, that actually took away authority that school boards had, stripped school boards of that authority, and has now given it strictly to the superintendent. Fortunately, however, in Lincoln Parish, we do have a superintendent who will allow us, board members, to come, to share, to network, to offer, and that superintendent will give those lessons.
Ms. Smith.
I believe that the superintendent is believed, and he does have a team of educators that work along with him, and that team should consist of educators who are from different levels of preschool, elementary school, middle school, junior high school, high school. Even though the state hands down a curriculum, we do still have choice of certain curriculums that we can teach in our own system, and we must come together to look at what curriculum is best for our students, based on dual language learners, our special needs children. It should be a team that collaborates together when choosing curriculum, so that it will flow from grade to grade in children being successful.
And moving now to District Twelve, Ms. Laverne.
I agree with Hunter, hopefully. We have a state curriculum and standards that the teachers have to go by, and usually they're made by non-educators or educators who have been in the system, have not been in the system for a long time, and, and they're made without the input of teachers. I think teachers' input needs to be the number one process in this. We do have a central office with well-qualified people that do research for different curriculums for the needs of all children, so that is a good, good point right there.
And Mr. Perry.
Thank you. So, as already, as already has been said, it's not the role of the board to set curriculum. That comes from the state, from curriculum supervisors. I did teach unactively, so I did have the luxury of local options, could teach at children, something that might be different even, that's taught at Ruston or at Simmsboro. I feel like this question was asked, though, because of some of the things that pop up from time to time at school board meetings and on social media that drive everybody The role that the board does have is in cultivating working relationships with school administrators. One thing that is important is to ensure that we have teachers that can present a valid, a balanced perspective on ideas and, and not pushing personal agendas. This is something that always comes up in election time, and who, students may ask you, who are you supporting, who are you supporting president, or whatever, and a good teacher can, can give the pros and cons of both sides of an issue without pushing their own agenda. Thank you.
There's several questions that grew out of COVID-19 pandemic, and candidates, this next question is one of those. Under what circumstances, if any, should schools be allowed to require vaccinations? We'll start this time with District Three, Mr. Cantor.
Mike. Jerry. Could you say the question one more time?
Under what circumstances, if any, should schools be allowed to require vaccinations?
I know this is a hot topic over the last few years, but I personally do not think that schools, that should be able to require vaccinations for a child to attend school. I think through the pandemic, we saw where, when we had to go to virtual learning and things, that, you know, virtual learning is not the same as being in a classroom. I think we all got some of that being out of work or being out of church, it's just not the same when you're not there. And I just don't think that any children should be required to have a vaccination to attend a public school and hinder their education.
And Ms. Miller.
Wow. All I can say is just wow. That's a tough one there. So I think that I would just leave that alone and say, really, I don't think the schools have authority to say that a child need a vaccination. Thank you.
Mr. Bean.
Well, I mean, schools have always required kids to have certain vaccinations, so, we are, we're living with COVID being so fresh. I mean, I, you know, you go back to some of the diseases that we are required students to, to have vaccines, to go back and, and have their boosters done, I mean, y'all, that's gone on since every one of us worked for kids. So, I mean, this thing with COVID, Jesus Christ, I'm 53 years old, I've never seen anything like it. So, didn't we jump the gun on it? Did we really know what was going on? I mean, I, we could all sit here and debate that. So, something that's that new and, and that unknown, should we have required it? I don't know that we should, in, in, you know, hindsight being 2020, but, I mean, up to this point in our educational system, we've always required some kind of vaccination.
And we'll move now to District Seven, Ms. Cantor.
Well, I was gonna say like Paul did, I mean, we have been doing vaccines for as long as I've been in school. If we're talking about the COVID vaccine, no, I do not believe that we should make our children have a COVID vaccine, just because, you know, there are so many unknowns, I think that, you know, we've been kind of, you know, finding out things as we go, so to speak. I think the vaccines have been, you know, hit or miss a little bit. I know that I've had my vaccine and boosters, and was required, didn't have a choice if I wanted to travel outside of the country, which I was not real appreciative of. But as far as my children, that would be a choice for me, as their mother, to talk to my husband about, and us to decide as a family what's best for them, and I would be, you know, appalled if someone told me what I needed to do for my children and putting something in their body like that. Now, we do have our regular vaccines, the ones that have been around for years, but to be honest, I mean, that was something that we looked into and talked about for those two. So, you know, it's, it's a matter of what works for people and their families, and I'm kinda like Hunter on the government, I really don't want people telling me what I have to do with my own children.
Ms. Smith.
I'm gonna sit for this one. I agree with, with Jenny. My three boys are not vaccinated, and I'd fight you over it. I mean, I don't think that anybody can tell my family or my children what I can do with them or what I cannot do with them. I do agree that some of the earlier stuff that has more data behind it proves that some of those earlier vaccines were, were needed. Even though they are required, there's plenty of kids walking around Lincoln Parish schools today, they don't have those vaccines either, and, and we're all, we're all getting up and going to school the next day. I am, I'm a firm believer in, in family first, and, you know, those decisions are gonna be made at my, at my dinner table, not, not at a school board table.
And moving down to, to District One, Mr. Washington.
Well, I'm gonna kinda disagree with those. I believe that...
Hang on.
Thank you. I, I hear my fellow parents stress their views regarding this, and my views are a little different. I think that that was a decision that was not made overnight. I think a lot of studies have been done, a lot of research has been done, a lot of people smarter than me made this decision about being vaccinated. I think with COVID, we all know that all of... I think with COVID, we all know that all of this is political. You know, one part supports vaccine, another part does not support vaccine. But I really think that, and I can understand that someone said, you know, I have a right for my child not to be vaccinated. I have a right for my child to be vaccinated. But when they're all together, we have to decide which one to lose over the other. But I really think that kids should be vaccinated in order to be a part of the school system. I'm a part of it. I'm a counseling patient, so I need to be a rock feet of this vaccine, vaccinated. I really do. Then they have other kids in school that have underlying health issues that need to be a rock feet of this vaccination. Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
I do agree with Mr. Washington. I wholeheartedly believe in the vaccination process. However, I do want the parents as far as, and just the school system, to develop like a systematic approach for students who are tested, whoever tests positive for COVID. And we are very transparent about that process, allowing them to come to school or just X amount of days. But as far as like the vaccination process, I do agree with that. And I just believe that there is a lot of research behind that that supports it. And I think that we just have to be able to protect our children.
And we'll move now to District 12, Ms. Ayer.
I don't think that schools should require vaccination for children. I mean, it's up to the parents. In my family, I have some that want the vaccination for their children and then I have others that do not agree with it. I don't think it should be required though to enter into school.
And Mr. Perry.
Thank you. I think the question was dealing specifically with COVID. But if you look at what has already been mentioned, our state required vaccines, there has always been the opportunity to opt out of that vaccine. So as long as it's done that way, I don't have an issue with requiring a vaccination as long as you can opt out of it.
Moving down now to District 10, Mr..
I am a firm believer in receiving vaccinations, the childhood vaccinations most of us took. But with the COVID, I believe that, you know, it should have a choice. I made a choice to take it because I wanted to be safe. I did have underlying conditions. I do take into consideration that for children that have underlying conditions and they will be around others who may choose not to have a vaccination. So it's a choice that parents make. And I don't feel that a child should be made to receive a vaccination in order to come to school. It should be a choice. It's safe to do it, but it should be a choice.
And Mr. Anderson.
I am vaccinated, I guess, from childhood on and every vaccination that's been out there. However, I do believe in individual rights. This is a subject that's so controversial that I will not state an opinion on it.
Okay, our next question is this, candidates. And this time we'll start with District 12. And here's your question. Do you support teaching critical race theory to elementary school children? Mr. Perry, you're first.
I think it's important that we take, we educate our students at age appropriate levels. And it's my understanding that the critical race theory that came out was originally like college level. So I would think, no, it's not appropriate for young elementary education.
I totally agree. I agree with everything that you said.
And go next into District 10, Mr. Andrews.
I am again hung up with the controversial issue. I could say yes, and then I could say no. On the subject, we have become so divided, we ought to be growing closeness. And some of that can be talked through. No comments.
Ms. Superintendent.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A very controversial issue, but I believe that at a appropriate age of understanding that it can be taught. At an appropriate age of understanding that will not bring about division or more controversy.
Moving now to District 3, Ms. Miller.
Thank you. First of all, I think we as individuals need to be more mindful and understanding exactly what this critical race theory is all about. If we were more knowledgeable, I would almost say that it could be done. But because we do not have the knowledge to discuss this without your, I feel that I think we should not be doing it at this point, especially given compared schools. Thank you.
And Mr. Bean.
I'm not going to lie, I don't know enough about critical race theory and what it actually is to say whether or not, when it should be taught. Age appropriate, there's a reason we don't teach algebra, archeometry, artrigonometry to little ones because brain development, they're not ready for that. I do wholly believe in teaching factual history, whether that's comfortable, uncomfortable, but I mean, all of it, all factual history. So are kids ready for it in elementary school? I wouldn't think so, but I'm not an elementary expert. I would think once you get into junior high and high school, that's probably more age appropriate, probably more brain development appropriate. But I am no expert on critical race theory. Every time you read about it, depending on where they go, it spirals out of control. So CRT itself, I don't know. But yes, I believe that we should actual teach factual history. Our kids need to know the factual history of our country. The kids need to know the factual history of the world itself. So it's age appropriate, absolutely.
And, yeah, Mr. Camper.
I do not know enough about critical race theory to say whether it should be or shouldn't be taught. Only time I ever hear it brought up is if you watch mainstream news. Until tonight, I've never heard it brought up in Lincoln Parish. So I can't say yes or no.
All right, moving to District 1, Ms. Williams.
So I had the honors to serve on the social studies committee for the State Department. And I was, I served on two committees where I helped develop the curriculum for the social studies, new social study standards. And I wholeheartedly believe in being transparent with students and making sure that we put them in a situation where they are global citizens and they're able to compete. And I'm very passionate about that. And so there were issues that we dealt with at the end. We, the entire committee, we had to get escorted to our cars after we went through the process of just developing the curriculum. But I believe that we need to be transparent and develop students to be global citizens. So I am in support of just the transparency part.
Mr. Washington.
Children just want to be children. Children really don't care about the race. Children just really want to be children. Who objected teaching critical race theory for grown folks? You can't hide from the facts, passing. I'm going to be black for the rest of my life, the rest of my life. Mr. Perry is going to be white for the rest of his life. We all come to this table with different backgrounds, different backgrounds. History is history. We cannot change that. Now, whether or not you go in and talk about slaves or this happened in the first grade, I'm not sure where you're coming. But history is history. Critical race theory is nothing but a political issue, a political topic. First graders, second graders, third graders, regardless of race, could care less. Only thing they want you to do is be my friend. Only thing they want to do is play with you. They could care less about the status. They don't care nothing about that. All they want to do is to be young kids, learn how to play with friends. So if we let the kids deal with this, we would have any problem. And let the old folks and grown folks stay out of it, what a world this would be.
Great answers from everybody up here. I would tell you that I think age appropriate is probably the most important thing that we can talk about. I think, Mr. Washington, I think you hit the nail on the head when you talk about the mess that has been made by, the conversations about CRT are from adults, it's not from children. And I will say that, you know, I said earlier tonight that one of the biggest points that I wanted to make was that I think that our school board and our school district need to be aligned with this community's values and expectations. And I think that teaching kindergarten through third graders, CRT, or anything that is not age appropriate, is not aligned with the expectations and the values of this community. The other thing that I would say is, is probably some of the most memorable and cherished relationships I've had as a student and a coach in Lincoln Parish schools have been with my friends from the other side of town. There's no questions asked, and I pass that along to my boys. From their time in Ruston Elementary to I Lewis to Ruston Junior High and Ruston High School, the relationships that they will foster with children that don't look like them, that don't live with them, that is going to take them further in life than anything else they learn in the schoolhouse.
And Ms. Camper.
Hard follow up those two. And I agree with both of them very much. What Mr. Washington said is 100% correct. You know, kids don't, kids are not born with prejudice. They are taught that. And when they're kids, they're having fun and they don't even notice, or at least don't say that they notice anything about anybody else. They just want to have fun and have their money over and play ball and everything else. I think that when you try to teach something like CRT at too young of an age, it actually causes more division. Because now they're saying, oh, well, I'm supposed to be on edge about whatever this is. I know that a member of our family, a young boy had, was talking about something and said something about some, something, the grownups said something about blackmail, talking about blackmailing another person, and he looked and said, that is racist. And so, you know, I agree. CRT, it's not appropriate for young children. We just need to let them have their fun and, you know, they can teach us a lot more than we can teach them at this point about relationships.
All right, candidates, we have time for two more questions. And here is your next two last questions. Next two last. What's the number one issue facing Lincoln Parish school system and what would you do to address that? This time we start with District 1, Mr. Washington.
The number one issue in Lincoln Parish is student achievement. That's the number one issue. I'm sorry. The number, I'm going to get this mic. Sorry, Dr. Williams. The number one issue in Lincoln Parish school system is student achievement. This is articulated by Superintendent Durick every time I talk to him. When I talk to the chief academic officer, student achievement. And trying to get our children at mastery, at mastery by 2026. And closing the achievement gap and putting in all of the different strategies, bringing all the stakeholders together to try to make this work. One of the main stakeholders we have to get a part of this are to engage our parents. We have to get our parent a part of this process to be able to make it work. So our number one concern in comparison, not teachers' error, it's not facilities, but student achievement. And getting all of our kids in grades three through five at mastery by 2026 and closing that achievement gap between black, white, and Hispanic students.
Ms. Williams.
The number one school district, I mean, the number one concern that I have is when I look at the test scores, and I'm a data-driven person, and I do a lot of research, I looked at some of the, as far as precipitating factors that are impacting our community. And I look at the crime rate. So when we look at like the schools, there is a direct correlation and the research supports it with the crime rates related to school performance. So the goal is to graduate students, just to graduate students as far as high school, but what are we graduating them to do? And so that's my concern is to make sure that our students are either college ready, which is the ultimate goal, or also look at as far as preparing them for military or two-year, or as far as job ready. So that's my number one concern as far as in our community is that we have to make sure that we are preparing our students. And it's just a direct correlation to the crime rate here in this community.
Moving now to District 3, Mr. Bean.
I'm, my number one thing here is what I said very much earlier. Everybody in this business is an advocate for the child. That's what you get in it for. But somehow we have lost our way in education. We are a factory that doesn't care about the factory workers and then we expect to put out a good product. It doesn't make any sense. Goes back to my biggest concern in education is that we have a dearth of young educators. We have a dearth of young educators who come in and stay in. And why is that happening? Because there's no respect in the job. We skip over the teachers somehow. I don't know how we expect that to work, specifically with this parish. We shouldn't have issues keeping teachers. And I'm going to go back to, and I'm going to be a broken record, if we don't do something about not being under that offensive group, state group benefits, we are going to continue to have problems in this parish.
Mr. Camper.
When the question was asked, my first thoughts, it's right where Mr. Bean went. To agree with Mr. Washington, education of the children is the number one thing. But to have that education, we've got to be able to keep. But to have that education, we've got to be able to keep teachers. And in the future, we might not be there right now, but in the future, getting quality teachers that are gonna be here and stay here, recruiting them to this area is probably going to be one of our number one concerns.
And Ms. Smith.
My number one concern in, in how, for folks here to my heart, is we have got to do something about our reading skills of our children. I've been in the system twenty-one years and I just, I can tell you story after story how far all our children are behind in reading. We have got to come up with a program uh that's gonna set our kids on the right standards in reading. It's a sad situation, but I know uh with the board and the lead members coming on, I'm hoping that that will be their number one priority to get us back up in reading. Thank you.
And we'll move now to District Seven, Ms. Canterbury.
Um ultimately, why we have all of school board and and teachers and everything else is for students. Um we're trying to educate them and prepare them and their well-being is of course the utmost importance um to me, it's about the students. Um how, how we go about those things is I think where, you know, we are lacking in some areas. Uh but the teachers, the teachers are the first line with those students, they are the ones with the students eight hours a day. Um we have got to do right by the teachers and make sure that they have what they need um to be able to take care of those children's needs. Um I I do believe, and one of the reasons I'm here, is super important because it takes a village kind of thing. I think that the parents need to be super involved still, I don't think they just send them to school and forget about them for eight hours. Um I I just think that in Lincoln Parish, we can come together a little more. Um but the teacher issue is is definitely, I know my friends that are teachers are concerned about quite a few of those things and I do think we need to focus there.
Ms. Smith.
Obviously, they've touched on lots of great things and I mean, I I agree with the majority of what everything said and I'm not gonna be a broken record, but I want to touch on a few other things. Uh as stakeholders in this community, and when we talk about stakeholders, you guys sitting out here are stakeholders, uh we've got to be actively engaged in our schools and our community at all times. It can't be self-serving, it can't be half-cocked, it cannot be when things are easy, it can't be when it's all good, it can't be when it's all bad. When we, when we hired Mr. Derek Superintendent, Mr. Byron Lyons was here, and I committed the two of them because they're the ones that put themselves out there and people just came out of the woodworks for for that, for that meeting. And I was like, hey, where were you guys two months ago when we were talking about school safety? Where were you two months ago when we were talking about teacher pay or budget cuts? And I think there are multiple opportunities for all stakeholders to stay involved. Um the other thing, when you talk about collaboration, this isn't just a Ruston thing. This is Simsboro to Shudron, Dubac to the South Side, Washington Heights to Swire Creek. We have to find a way to collaborate within every neighborhood of this parish to make sure that all stakeholders, especially those parents that aren't doing what they're supposed to do, they need to be held accountable. Because their children are the ones that are suffering. There's lots of great parents out there that are doing their part. And there's lots of people that have stepped up for those parents that aren't doing their part, but those are some of my most important things.
All right, we'll move now to District Ten, Mr. Andrews.
Okay, I'm gonna agree then with what I have heard. One thing in particular is is getting parents involved. That is some kind of struggle. And in some cases, it's an impossibility. And now we're gonna have to find a way to get around those parents, guardians, grandparents, those with no parenting skills, get around them to get to the child. And we talk about bringing in teachers, yes. But we're gonna have to have specialists to come in. And use those specialists with the new initiatives and all of the other incentives out there uh to uh close this gap and to reach out to children. I need to be excused just for about five minutes.
And Ms. Smith.
I agree with um Mr. Smith, I agree with Mr. Andrews. Uh for several involved in plays a great role in how successful students are. Student achievement, I feel, is a problem. And too many educators in the lives of children are parents and teachers. Parents spend their early years with children and it moves on into the latter years, uh they are teachers up until children are adults. Parents and teachers have to be held accountable. There are, we have younger parents, parents who need parenting themselves. So we have to have programs in place to help those parents that need that assistance in order that they can learn how to help their children achieve. It does take a village to raise a child. All sides of town, as Mr. Smith has said, have to collaborate together. We have to engage in order to do what needs to be done to help raise the level of student achievement. And it begins in preschool. If children have a strong preschool foundation, then they don't struggle carefully in second grade.
And District Twelve, Ms. Abrams.
I think the number one issue is keeping quality teachers to provide a quality education in Lincoln Parish. I still think strong mentoring programs would keep the teachers in Lincoln Parish.
Thank you. Um I'm torn between two things that have been mentioned. I I do think while it might not be as immediate, the need to attract and retain teachers is gonna get very critical here shortly. Uh it it the, one of the most pressing things that we have going on right now in terms of achievement is reading levels. Uh I read something recently about the Early Learning Center, I do not remember the name of the program that they uh were using, but it sounded like a lot of good success was coming out of it. As far as what we, or what we can do, um figure out ways to reach out to parents, which as you mentioned, is extremely difficult to do, especially when you're trying to break a cycle. Um I've seen on the school board website a campaign of no empty seats here lately. I hope that's, that's something uh that's working well, but maybe a, a campaign for reading with your child at home is something that uh will help. Our children that are so far behind in reading, the rest of their education is gonna be messed up until they can get back on track. Thank you.
All right, Candace, last question and maybe the most important one of the night. This time we begin with District Three, Mr. Canterbury. Why are you the best candidate for?
I'm glad y'all like me going first. Like I said, I am a lifelong resident of Lincoln Parish. Uh I believe in my school, my wife and me both graduated from the same school at Simsboro. All three of my children are in the public school system. Uh I have many, many friends that I graduated with and many other family members that are all in the school system. Uh I care about my community, I care about my school, I care about the people in it, and I just want to do my part in helping to make sure our kids get a quality education and that the values of this community in this area are being taught in our schools. And that's why I feel like I deserve to serve this position.
And Miller, why are you the best candidate for?
Um when I think of the best candidate, also qualifications that I aspire or I feel that I have that would make me the best candidate, and these are just the qualities I have. First of all, you have to be kingdom connected. And if you don't understand what I'm saying about kingdom connection, you can talk to me after the fourth year. Then I have good character. So I think that also makes me the best qualified candidate. Then I'm confident, I am committed to what I do and to you would be. I'm a courageous person, I have strong convictions, I'm consistent in what I do, and lastly but least, you have to be, and I am, Christ alive. So these are the qualifications that I possess, so I ask you to respectfully vote for me as District Three Lincoln Parish School Board Member on November eighth. Thank you.
And Ms. Bean.
Um I'm actually feeling pretty good because I think that uh any of the three of us, uh I feel pretty good about. Why would I be the best, I'm the best looking, was that? No, I, like I said earlier, my um, it goes back to George Washington, right? I I'm the best candidate because I, I personally do not want the job because I know how I would grind because that's what I do. I would grind at desk like you grind at work, grind in the gym, and I would spend too much time. Um I think that a school board member is important, that they're not a rubber stamp for what's happening at the school board, but you also are not obstinate just to be obstinate, which would probably be my biggest fault. Um I, 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 before tonight, I I didn't know either of my, my two compatriots here, I feel good about District Three regardless about whichever one of us gets that spot, to be quite honest with you.
Moving now to District Seven, Ms. Canterbury.
Um I'm, I'm, I think District Seven will be well represented either way. Um so I'm good with that. Um Hunter, you know, Hunter cares and so do I. Uh we both have a desire to try to represent the district well and do what's best. Um as far as me, um my work ethic is um, you know, very hard. I will do whatever I need to do to make sure that um the people of my district are represented the way that they need to be represented. Uh you're not going to see me worried about um power, certainly not money in this one, uh popularity, I'm going to do what's right. Um I do want everyone in my district to have a voice and that is why we're here. Um it is about our children ultimately and uh it's, on my few signs that I have out, uh I have said I want to give everyone a voice. All people deserve a voice for what's going on with their children.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Jenny, for the kind words. Um Jenny and I, we talked months ago and when we said we were gonna go about this the right way and I'm, and I'm proud to say that we've continued that and I think everybody on this board should be committed for doing that the right way as well. Um for me, it goes back to some of the things that I've already said, school board members need to be aligned with their community's values and expectations and and I am and always have been. Uh we should understand our role in the school system, we're not micromanagers, we're policymakers. Um we definitely need to be problem solvers, not problem makers and problem instigators. We need to act deliberately and consistently. From a business standpoint, like I said, it's a hundred million dollar a year business. For the last eighteen years, I've helped manage and run a family business here in Ruston, employing as few as five and as many as a hundred at any given time. Managing multimillion dollar projects across diverse locations across this country. I also know that being in a leadership role is not easy and it's not one that I've ever taken lightly. From my time at Ruston High School as a quarterback and later as a coach to serving on multiple community boards, I've developed a leadership mentality that allows me to make tough decisions with a business mind, a servant's heart, and a strong work ethic. The last thing I'll say is, for me, being on the school board is an opportunity to give back to a community and a school system that is, that has given a tremendous amount to me. And I know that together we can continue to impact the lives of thousands of thousands of young people for years to come. I appreciate your vote, thank you.
We'll move to District One. Come on, this end. District One, Mr. Washington.
Before I threw my hat into the ring, kicking off my campaign for Lincoln Parish School Board District One, it was, it ends, and will always be about the kids. Putting our kids first and foremost, their educational need, academic goals, and improvement, and overall well-being is my main objective. And with your support at the polls on November eighth, I would be honored and humbled to continue service in Lincoln Parish School as I have over the past several decade, decades dedicating my life. Your vote for me will be, will be a vote not only for my educational and administrative experience, but for my character, my integrity, my commitment, my proven track record as an attentive, responsible listener and team player who effectively understands, navigates the role, responsibility, and yes, with full transparency. Even with limitations of a dedicated school board member who never, not serves. Elect number fifty-nine, Willie Washington Jr., your next school board member, who's ready to go day one.
Ms. Williams.
So um I, I'm very passionate about supporting students and serving students and being a voice for every student. And so I come to you with the experience in working in high-performance school systems. But not only that, um I train um our future uh teachers and future principals as well currently. So I understand the research, the data, and also wanted to um work in collaboration with the board to set the expectation that we strive to have um at least one Blue Ribbon campus in this school, in our school district. Um and we know that the National Blue Ribbon campuses is the gold star of um Indiana United States. So when I looked at the data um and just looked at the list of schools, there are only seven that were named Blue Ribbon. And so our community sits in between two universities and I believe as far as the collaboration with the two universities and our um all stakeholders, that we can achieve greatness here. And so my goal is to make sure that I serve all students and be a voice for every student.
District Twelve, now Ms. Abrams.
I feel like I have a good listening ear. Um welcome all responses from and concerns and issues from the public. And being an educator, do understand uh issues concerning um teachers and students. And uh the parents do understand this and I do welcome all concerns and try to help them to solve this.
Ms. Cherry.
We have so many similarities. At one point, Ms. Abrams was introducing herself, I thought she was reading off of my introduction. Um I don't think there's a bad choice between us. And I think uh one thing that that might be to my advantage, why I might be a better candidate, is that having retired only last year, I might have a fresher perspective of what's going on in the classroom. going on in the classroom in today's world. But I don't think there's a bad choice between us. Thank you.
And District Ten, Ms. Abrams.
I am passionate about education. I am reliable. I have integrity. I am a go-getter, a hard worker. There is no mountain that I feel like I cannot move out of the way. I feel like my spiritual vocation, as well as my academic education, has equipped me to help make a difference in District Ten, not only District Ten, but within the parish. I'm not about propaganda, I'm about making an impact on the lives of people, especially our children. I want to be a voice for children and a voice for the community. Our children, our community, our future, that is what I am about. Please consider me when you make your decision for Lincoln Parish School Board, District Ten. I will be humbled.
My profession is painting houses. And if you let the regular bid, I was good at it. Paid twice as much, the britches were not disrespectful, they were obedient. That was my profession. But my calling is what I'm doing now, working with children because of the conviction I have and the belief that I have in every child is valuable, needs an education, deserves an education, can be successful. And I have seen that in the 56 years...I just left the classroom hall a little while ago, this afternoon. In the 56 years, I have seen these things materialize. So with my experience from the school of trauma and error, because of that, because of my ability to apply acquired knowledge, wisdom, and understanding, and to help me constantly changing initiatives and challenges, and even because of my approach to diffuse conflict, I'm sometimes counted as the calming agent around the world. But anyway, with all of these things going, then I would be the better choice for the board.
And that completes our form tonight. Thank you again, candidates. Thank you all. Feel free to visit with these folks. We'd like to also thank again Art and Bank, who helped fund this, and remind you that early voting for November 8th against October 20th...